It's meeting time, folks. Welcome, everybody, to our Municipal District of St. Stephen, a committee of a whole meeting for June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. First of all, I'd like to, before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Pastunamikadi people. And where it is, the month of June is when we should take the time to recognize and celebrate the rich heritage of our indigenous peoples in Canada by listening to the inspiring stories from the First Nations and the Pastunamikadi. It is an excellent opportunity to take the time to learn more about their unique cultures. So June is recognition month. Next, I'd like to have a mover and secondor for the approval of the agenda on the committee of whole meeting of June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Counselor Wright, Counselor Harding. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Okay, and we'll start right off with our public delegations, starting off with Gemtech, consulting engineers and scientists limited. The floor is yours.
Your worship. Good evening, members of council. So tonight, we're gonna be presenting the five-year strategic plan for the Public Works Department. And I'm joined with Murray Jamer tonight, but on our team, there's also Garth Trail, who's a fleet specialist, and Dave Knowles, who's a municipal operation advisor. He was the former director of Public Works in the cities of Depp and Bathurst. I'm with Gemtech for two years now. Before that, I was with the city of Fredericton, so I've combined municipal experience of fifteen years in the asset management space, energy management, and financial management in general. I'll let Murray introduce himself here.
Your worship, so I'm, I'll be sharing the presentation with Jihad tonight. And after you get so many years in, you know, you don't have to say how many years of experience you have, but I had a lot of experience with the city of St. John, was director of Public Works there, and then I moved to city of Fredericton as the city engineer initially, and then I finished my career as Deputy C. A. O. in Fredericton. And then in retirement, I worked with Gemtech. So really pleased to be working on this job down here in this municipality, and we came here, I guess, two or three times and met all your staff, and so we're here tonight to tell you all about it.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure. So we're gonna be presenting the five-year strategic plan for the Public Works Department. And we're gonna touch on asset management fundamentals at the end of the presentation as well. Basically, we had a meeting with staff, and we had a tour for the key facilities, and we had a workshop. We talked about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, the S. W. A. T. analysis for the Public Works Department. And as you know, it's divided into three units, the transportation, the water treatment and distribution, and the wastewater treatment, and what was the?
Collection.
Collection and treatment, sorry. So what we heard in terms of the transportation unit strengths is basically you have very experienced labor, high work ethics, and a make-do attitude. The operators all get well together, there are good communications amongst the operators, and the supervisors have, like, work assignments, they're called working supervisors, which is good motivator for the crew. There's a good safety culture, and the equipment is very well taken care of. The level of service for snow and ice control is good, that's what we heard from staff. Again, this is a workshop with staff, it's not talking to the public or talking to members of council. The most mechanical repairs take place in-house, are done in-house, and the municipal district receives good service from surrounding suppliers when it comes to fleet parts and fleet repairs. In terms of weaknesses, you could definitely take advantage of an electronic work order system, and timekeeping is still being done manually, and there's, like, waste in the process plus room for error. There's a lack in administrative capacity a lot of times, and what we understand is you get, they get part-time staff certain times of the year. The shop could use a five-S, and to be more organized, there seems to be some clutter there. There's a lack of storage space for inventory, but maybe if the shop is cleaned up or arranged differently, there could be a place for that. Some assets are in bad condition. We say not good here, but really some streets and some equipment and some facilities, it's no surprise, are in bad condition. The salt shed is one of them, basically, and it's, it is in bad condition, and there is no salt, there's no salt sheds, sorry, there's no sand, sand shed, sand is stored outside in piles. There is no G. A. S. capacity within the town, and it's very helpful for plans and reports. Everybody's familiar, I don't know if everybody's familiar with G. A. S., it stands for Geographic Information System, is basically Google Earth on steroids with multiple layers and whatnot. When we talked to staff, they were a little anxious about what, about the changes, it was, you know, talking about the local governance reform and other things in the mix, so they were a little anxious about the change. And staff below the management level didn't have access to credit cards, low-limit credit cards, which can create unnecessary admin work for supervisors. In terms of opportunities for the transportation unit, there's an opportunity to produce a snow control plan with resources and a clear methodology, and reorganize the main public works depot to have more efficient use of space. Like we discussed, and the weaknesses, basically address the work order system with something more up-to-date, and implement digital solution for time management. Formalize a training program. Folks you have are very, are excellent operators, but there is no formal training program in place. So it's good to formalize a training program. And have a low-limit credit card system for, for operational staff. There is one-off, and that's, that's the case with most smaller municipalities, you would have one-off staff members, a mechanic is a prime example. So when you're relying on one person for a task, if that person is out, then, you know, that task is at risk. And another opportunity is to better G. A. S. capacity in-house, and maybe that could be something done collaboratively with the region. Again, a smaller, a smaller municipality may not be able to justify a full-time G. A. S. position, but maybe on a regional level, that could be something to explore. And a business case can be made for procuring a rubber-tight excavator to replace the existing backhoe. You'll need that specifically in the winter to replace or to fix water, water breaks instead of renting. More opportunities, so you could reduce or more, more, more salt in the winter than sand, which in turn will speed up your spring cleaning process and a better level of service, even in the winter with, with more salt. And you could build a salt shed and store the sand inside. Implement a cap, a formal capital funding program for equipment. We understand there's a budget for, for fleet every year, but that may not necessarily be enough to replace major pieces of gear when the time comes. So you might wanna build a plan and build some reserves in that plan for when the time comes for a major piece of gear replacement, so that you're able to replace it. There's an opportunity to integrate the capital program. For example, when you're digging the street, this is the ideal time to also replace everything underground for linear infrastructure and the curb and the sidewalk at once, usually it's an eighty-year cycle. And it's good to overlay those, those processes and do it at once. For asset management, delineate the role of council, where council would set the level of service, and then staff will, will decide what equipment they need, what staffing capacity they need to meet that level of service. Again, it's not uncommon in municipalities to have sometimes council a little bit in operations, and that could be, could be an issue. And have a holistic look at your space requirements, especially after the local governance reform. Look at the salt shed, for example, you have the border arena where there's a lot of equipment being stored. So if, if, if the municipal district almost set down, if the municipal district chooses to put that area for development or repurpose that facility, then there's no place for that equipment. You have two fire stations now. You could consider the water, water depot that's here by the waters, a smaller building, and maybe put that together with the public works building. You know, there's, it's good to, to look holistically at the, at the space and bring people together as, as much as you can. So in terms of threats, the first and first one that naturally comes out is the salt shed, it's an aging structure that has to go. And the second one is border arena, if it's sold for development or repurposed, then you have no, no place to store all the equipment you have, the seasonal equipment you have. There are climate change implications, as you know, we're expecting more precipitation in New Brunswick, and there's a couple major culverts under main routes that if these fail, then it is, it is a threat. Also, if you have a major water break during a storm event, that could pose a threat because it's the same crew that's responding to the, to snow removal, the same crew responding to water breaks. We mentioned the lack of formal training, like I have, you don't have an issue with the operators you have, the great operators, but a formal training program is necessary, especially when have accidents, got forbid, or for insurance claims and whatnot, it's, it's good to have that. Although the equip, the operators are good in equipment, the mechanic is doing a great job, but you do have an aging fleet, and that's a risk. Potential loss of key staff members where you don't have redundancy, that's, we cannot not mention that as a threat, but what you could do is maybe build capacity and, and train folk, have cross-training, multiple folks doing the same task could be an answer to that. There's a threat if the U. S. exchange decide to go up and the cost of borrowing, which is already going up, there could be a threat for supply chain issues affecting heavy equipment, and we saw that during COVID, where you would wait for two years or two and a half years before you get, can get a piece of gear. And the full implications of the local governance reform are not fully known and fleshed out yet, and, you know, there are some, some matters that you folks are dealing with here. The last three I underlined because that's really not, not within your control, it's something that's, that's out there, but not something you could really do much about. So in terms of the water treatment and distribution, so that was the transportation, we're gonna do the same for water treatment and distribution, bear with me. You have good water quality, and you have capacity in the system to accommodate for further development. The infrastructure renewal recently has addressed some of the weaknesses in the distribution system already, but there's a lot more to, to address. You have a good relationship with the surrounding municipalities, again, for assistance and parts and whatnot. Good staff retention, the staff you have is experienced, and they seem to stay here for a long time, which is good, a good indicator. In terms of weaknesses, you have an elevated level of manganese and iron. The municipal district does not own an excavator with a ripper tooth, and we mentioned that as opportunity to replace the existing backhoe when its end-of-life comes through. There's a lack of effective internal communication, could use a lot more effective communication amongst the various divisions, and we're all busy out doing what they're doing, and sometimes some projects, you know, are connected somehow, it's good to have more internal There's a lack of on-call personnel for water treatment and distribute, and distribution, whereas you have three on the wastewater collection and treatment side, so it's an issue just for water treatment and distribution. The water meters are still done manually and sent to finance manually, that there's a room for error there and room for recurring work and more administrative work. This day and age, there are solutions where you could drive by and pick up the readings, really, and integrate through the backend system virtually. There's a high percentage of non-revenue water, and that's an indication that there is leakage in the network, basically, and it's not uncommon for, for an old network. In terms of opportunities, the opportunity to address the turbidity issue and to create a hydraulic model for the water distribution system, it's, it's a technical term, but that means basically you can simulate on a computer, if you change the pressure here, what's gonna happen downstream and what's gonna happen upstream. It's like, instead of physically adjusting things with manually, you can have a software manipulation of that. There's some tuberculated pipes, cast iron pipes, they need to be, they can be addressed. And we can automate the water meter reading process as well, like we mentioned. Update the bill format, which still has some metric and some imperial in it. Ensure operational staff have an opportunity to discuss rationale for the design to twin pipe to Milltown District Reservoir. I guess there's an opportunity that frontline staff could work directly, because right now, there's no intermediate person between the director and frontline staff or supervisors. It's good for, to have that direct line of communication between them and the design And finally, get the, and not finally, there could be more opportunities, but get the operational staff more involved in the budgeting and the budget control process. Yep, more opportunities. Select key staff so that they can attend the A. C. W. W. A. A. conference. Improve internal communication, and that's amongst the various divisions. Ensure clear policies are in place to establish expectations to staff, particularly relating to relationships with residents. Let's keep in mind, this is a service where it entails some, some shut-offs at times if bills are not paid, so it can be confrontational at times. It's good to give the staff the tools required to be prepared to deal with these situations. And take over private hydrants for a fee-for-service basis, because there's a risk if the private owner's not doing the proper maintenance, and you go there for a fire and the hydrant is seized up or plugged, there's a risk there. It's good for the municipal district to take that over, make sure it's done, it's for, for public safety as well. Improve the collection rate for water and sewer bills, we understand there's a lot of arrears causing sometimes cash flow issues for finance. In terms of threats, there doesn't seem to be a desire for new personnel to have more responsibilities and grow. We didn't dive into the root cause of that, is it the lack of the workforce or the talent in the region, is it something else going on, but that is something that needs to be addressed and further investigated. And no additional trained people have been identified. Against the main threat here is succession planning and staffing for the future. The last unit is the wastewater collection and treatment. Again, you have experienced and reliable staff, you do not have fat oil, or grease issue, which is a good thing, usually restaurants sometimes could cause this issue. Before the fire, the lagoon was in good condition, so. In terms of weaknesses, some force mains need to be replaced, end of life, there is no emergency backup for lift stations, and that could be an issue when you lose power and there's an overflow to neighboring water bodies, and in some cases, there's lack of spare parts for the wastewater system as well. Although the lagoons, for the most part, were in good condition, some banks needed repair at the time, I'm sure there's gonna, they're gonna be addressed now after the fire. One of the lift stations needs to be replaced, and there is no clear succession plan for key members, and that's a risk. In terms of opportunities for this unit, obviously update the deficient lift station, and continue to address the issues of combined sewer, so combined sewer, where you have stormwater and sewer running in the same pipe, you can only address that. It makes the most sense to address that when you're doing the street and the major infrastructure, basically. And at the time, we had to upgrade the blowers at the lagoon to allow for more capacity, so talking to Sean now, my understanding is that the new blowers that are on order will be fifty percent more, which fifty percent bigger, basically. Improve the connectivity to the SCADA system, SCADA system, the control system for the, for the pipe, against, it's a computer model where you can control the pumps and the lift stations from, from the computer, so not every lift station was connected at the time. More opportunities to acquire a mobile generator and basically retrofit the existing stations to accept a plug-in generator that could be on a trailer, you could travel around and hook it up in short notice. Select key staff again to attend the conference of A. C. W. W. A. And to get operational staff more involved with the budgeting and budget control process. We're, we're seeing the same thing repeating, it's because it's various divisions. In terms of threats, not enough personnel, again, it's the same issue that we saw on the water side, the main lift station is undersized. And in terms of our key takeaways, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Murray to go over those.
Thanks, Jihad. And Jihad gave you a lot of detail, but if you want even more detail, then we did do a report, so you can read, get even more detail in there. So look, when you do something like what we're doing here, we're focusing on, you know, the needs, we're focusing maybe on the, the parts that aren't running so well. I just wanna make sure that you don't lose sight of the fact that, like, I've been around to a lot of municipalities, small, large, and everything in between, and so there's a lot about the operation here that we're pretty impressed with. And so one thing, I think Jihad mentioned it, but you see this quite often in a small town, is that there's that make-do attitude. People say, yeah, well, you know, we can, we don't need a brand-new piece of equipment, or we don't need, you know, to, to buy something, we can make it work. And boy, you know, we saw that in spades when we run around. So again, we're gonna focus on, obviously, the things that we think you can do better, but, but look, there's lots that you're already doing very well. So I just wanna say, before I get into my slide here, that our role in all this is that the information basically came from, the most of it came from your staff. So our role was to poke and prod and, and say, well, what about this, how do you handle this? And then they would tell us, so, so that's what our role was, is, is to extract that information from, you know, people that probably weren't that used to this kind of process, but we, we were able to help them assemble the information. And then we brought our own experience, so I've had a lot of experience in everything that takes place here in the town of St. Stephen in terms of what we looked at, and so I could say, well, you know, have you looked at this, or what about trying this? Yeah, and one thing, it's, I know it's not in my slides, so I'll mention it, 'cause Jihad brought it up a few times. You know, we're facing a different world in the future in terms, like, right now, you have a lot of good operators, and they can all drive standard transmission vehicles, and, you know, that's, you see that a lot, like, in a more rural part of the province, but I'm not convinced that that's gonna be the case in the future, you know, like, where are you gonna get operators for equipment, where are you gonna get operators for, for some of your plants? And it may be that you don't have the same source of expertise available to you in the future that you have right now. All right, so one of, my job is to talk about the key takeaways, and, like, this goes right to the top of my list, need an on-the-business resource. Now, here's what I mean by that. In every company or every organization, you have what you call working in the business, that's looking after the day-to-day business, but there should be somebody also that steps back and says, wait, I know that's the way we're doing it right now, but how should we be doing it better in the future? And so when we look at your, when we look at Public Works in, in this municipality, we think that's missing, there's, you have very good people working in the business, but, you know, you don't have a lot of resources that are, that are able to sit down and, and really think about what you should be doing better next year, five years from now, ten years from now, it's, it's strategic lens. Not enough investment in capital, and, like, that's, I'd say particularly true on the water and sewer side, and we'll talk probably more about that later under asset management. Need more formalized procedures, so there are some plans in place, and like I say, great make-do atti, make-do attitude, but, you know, these days, you do need, like, formalized snow control plans, formalized cleaning plans, more formal plans so that, not only so that the folks perform in the work, you know, so that they know what plan they're following, but you can also explain to the public, this is what we do, and this is why we do it. Management perspective needed on operational issues, so, and again, this kind of relates to that, on-the-business resource, but, like, in any organization, you know, the folks that are actually doing the work, their job is not to think strategically about, you know, what's best for your municipality, their job is just to do the work at hand, but there needs to be that management perspective, like, how can we, you know, how can we become more efficient, maybe we can even, you know, reduce the, the staff complement over the years, maybe we can save money some other way. But, you know, you have one, I would say, you know, because he's involved in other parts of the municipality's operation, you really only have a portion of one person from a management perspective in this, in this department, that's what I mean by that. And- And a continuous improvement culture, and this, this also speaks to working on the business. So some of the, the existing practices, like, there are not too many communities, for example, in New Brunswick that still use a wingman on the plow trucks, but, but your municipality does. So we're not saying, you know, get rid of it, but you should be looking at those things. Is that, is that something that we wanna continue with? Better shop organization, and, and Jihad and I are trained in Lean Six Sigma, and so, you know, this is near and dear to our heart. Like, we, we recognize this stuff when we see it. And moving away from some of the paper-based processes to processes that are digitalized. And, you know, move to more fact-based decisions. So Jihad mentioned, you know, having GIS, having hydraulic models for water and sewer So the strategic priorities that we, those were our main takeaways. So, and, and so the, I'll just go through the strategic priorities that were identified, I guess, by your staff and by us as your consultant. So first one, address capital infrastructure requirements. So, and this is, I, I should also say as a caution here, these things that we're talking about addressing are not unlike what you would see in just about every municipality in New Brunswick or beyond New Brunswick. So I don't want people to feel like there's something sort of that's happening here that you don't see in other places. I think you have to have a, a really good look at your water and wastewater billing rate structure. You know, your, your taxes, when the assessments increase, they, they look after, sort of automatically, they look after the inflation issue. But there's not a similar mechanism on the water and wastewater side. If you don't raise the rates, then your, your, your revenues don't go up from one year to the next. So, you know, I think this municipality really has to look at their, their, their water and sewer rates. And increase the capital investment in infrastructure and asset renewal. So let's, that's a big phrase out there now, infrastructure renewal, like, people that were sitting in your chairs 20, 30 years ago, they didn't have to worry about that. All they had to worry about was operation and maintenance. But now the infrastructure's getting to the age where there's a whole new cost that comes along, and that cost is, is replacement. Strategic priority number two, develop and update plans. So we've mentioned that town, the town, the municipality already has a, an asset management plan, and we had a look at that as part of our work. And so, but an asset management plan is not a static document that you put on the shelf and forget about it. You, you gotta update that every year, and what are we getting done, and what are the new priorities that are emerging? And so that's one of them. Severe weather events plans, and, you know, you had kind of a severe weather event with your forest fires here just, just recently. Update snow and ice control plans. So there is a snow and ice control plan, but it needs to be updated, and it needs to get into some more detail in terms of what the roots are, what the level of service are. So, you know, there's some room for improvement on that. And create other formal operational-type plans. And Jihad mentioned facilities and, and space requirement plans. And, and our comment was, before we would recommend that you say, geez, we need more space, just make sure that you're using the existing space in an optimal fashion, so that, you know, yeah, make sure that you're using the existing space very well before you come to the conclusion that you need more. And equipment replacement strategy. And so that's, that's just part of your capital replacement strategy in the same way that you look at replacing facilities or, or underground infrastructure or whatever. Okay, number three, increase staff capacity. Not necessarily increase staff, but one position that we, we did look at and that we are recommending is a manager of technical services. And if you look at our report, there's actually a whole, there's a job description that was, that was shown in that report. And, like, a lot of the things that we talk about here is having more formalized procedures, more opportunity to work on the business, you know, a management perspective. This new position, like, I think this is one of the key recommendations that we'll make to you as a council. And so, like, this is an important part of our recommendations. An annual report card is just like, how did we do this year? And it's a great way to communicate with the staff in your department, but it's also a great way to communicate with the council so that you folks know what's going on. Increase administrative capacity, and Jihad mentioned that as well. More training and certificates, and you're, again, you're at a very sort of, maybe lucky point in your history where, like, a lot of these good folks that you have working for you, you know, they're there now, but they're, you know, they're all getting older, and maybe they're not gonna be there in the future. And so, you know, and that goes along with develop succession plans, particularly for key individuals. And Jihad mentioned, too, like, the ACWA, the Atlantic Canada Water and Wastewater Association, like, that's a great opportunity to meet some of your colleagues in other municipalities and, and, you know, get some good ideas. Strategic priority number four, introduce continuous improvement. And some of the things we looked at there, tools and training on continuous improvement. Now, we're not talking here about jumping into it in the same way, for example, that we did in Fredericton, a larger municipality. But there are, there is some low-hanging fruit that you would get through some of the tools, like Jihad mentioned, 5S or Waste Walks are called, where you just basically train your staff to look for inefficiencies or opportunities for improvement. Empowering staff to identify improvement opportunities, you know? We don't always have to do it the way that we did it last year. And seed an improvement and innovation fund. So, you know, there's, there's some incentive, like, you save some money here, and then you can use that money to save some money somewhere else, and it, it kinda grows. And we've seen that used before. And I guess strategic priority number five, implement regular communication processes. And we gave some example here, daily huddles and shared platform for communication and municipal district hall meetings. So some of the other recommendations, and they're included in the report, but I'll just highlight some of them, is that computer controls on your salt sand spreader. So again, most of the, you know, most of the industry these days has computerized control, so it's not just the, the operator kinda saying, well, I think I've got it about there, right? Like, he can actually control so many kilograms per kilometer, and, you know, he knows what that spread, spread rate can produce in terms of a level of service. And so it's, it's just, that's the way the industry is going, has gone. Look, it sounds counterintuitive, but consider use of straight salt in winter operations. And so if you look at the level of service that you're trying to produce, and you're trying to produce bare pavement, for example, on some routes, well, that doesn't happen with sand. So what are you putting the sand out there for? So, you know, and I've seen municipalities move away from sort of using a salt-sand mix, and they use straight salt, they produce a better level of service, they don't actually end up using more salt. And also then spring cleaning is easier, and catch basin cleaning is easier, too. So anyway, that's something that requires, like, a further analysis, I would say. Automatic transmission trucks, again, to, to address the issue that we talked about and reevaluate the use of wingmen. Vehicle management system, and that came from our fleet manager that was down here as part of this assignment, and, and he thought that would be a great way to control how much you're spending on a particular piece of equipment. And the other recommendations in the strategic plan and the rates review. So I just highlighted some of them. So.
Sir, turn.
Yeah.
Did we overwhelm it or underwhelm?
No, well, just, when you, when you, when you hear it, and you, when you hear it before, and you hear it on a solid document like this, it makes you, it makes you think of what a lot of work we gotta do, for sure. So, yeah, I'll, I'll let you guys ask some questions there first, and then I'll ask. You wanna go? Go ahead, Wade.
So when you talked about, for instance, the, the manager of technical services, and you talk about, you know, you need a rubber tire excavator and so on and so forth, did you guys go into the analysis at a depth where you're actually looking at return on investment? Did you look at, like, for instance, how much, you know, consulting we're using right now from an engineering standpoint, and how that would be offset by having our own in-house one? And same, same with the excavator? Did you get that deep into the analysis?
For your worship, on the technical, technical measure position, it's not for the design. It's not to replace the engineering design work. It's to coordinate mostly with the design work. It's to have that layer of management between the working supervisors who are in the trenches and the director position who's part-time on that department as well. So it's that level of management in between who's working on the business, who's chasing continuous improvement, building those plans internally, so on and so forth. So I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked that question, because it's not to replace the engineering design at all.
Is it more about efficiencies and, and about, yeah?
Exactly. On the rubber tire piece, the backhoe is towards the end of its life, and we heard from the operators that in the winter, if there's a water break, they're going out and hiring a contractor, basically, to deal with that. So the business, a very detailed business case was not built for that. However, it's, it can easily be done through internal forces, I guess. The case is there, like, kinda in their head, anyway. Anything to add there, Murray?
Well, I just wanted to add, your worship, to the, you know, in terms of the manager of technical services, and as Jihad said, you're still gonna have your engineering company do your design, but the, what that would look like on that side of it is that instead of just, say, a non-technical person say, geez, we got some kind of problem there, you're gonna have to look at it. Well, then you have a technical person that says, look, we've chased this down, we've been watching it, and we think, we think we know what the problem is. Now you're gonna have to come up with a design that, that addresses that. So I think you're gonna save on your engineering bill in the sense that you're gonna be giving your engineering company better information. So, so, so that's on that side, on the design side. But then there's all those other things that we talked about, like better operational plans, you know? Those only come when, when you have somebody that's good technically, that can sit back and look at things and, and, and put those things together. Thank you.
Counselor Heislip?
First of all, thanks for the presentation. It, you know, some of that stuff is common sense, but until it's laid out in front of you, you don't realize some of these things. And of course, we're, as council, we're kind of set back from these issues, right? We, we hear some of them as they, as they come about, and we see it come across when it's time to purchase something or something happens, right? I was just, I was just looking at that, when we, we were talking before about, what was it? I wrote it down. Non, non-revenue water. And I was trying to think, like, I know we have aging infrastructure, and I know there are leaks out there, but we usually catch them pretty fair, fairly quick, 'cause, I mean, usually the public says, yeah, there's something coming up through the road here, so. But I was just thinking the other places, too, that, I don't know if you're aware, or I've heard before, it's before my time, when we put that new, when I asked, when I said about the customs building up and the new customs building, that there's actually a water that has to go in to clear that pipe or something, so it's continuously running all the time. So that may be one of the issues. And then we have parks that are, like, downtown for the, for the water park that's continuously running most of the summer until we get that, unless it's been fixed yet. So those things are, are going all the time, and that could add to that, 'cause you said there's made, it's, it's high.
Yeah. And that's, that's another job, your worship, for your, your, your technical services guy. They used to call it, in the old days, they call it unaccounted-for water. But that kinda gave the impression that you couldn't account for it. But now they've changed it. They call it non-revenue water, because...
You're not making any money.
Because you're not, you're not making any money off. But you can kind of account for it, like, you know, the fire department uses some of it. Well, that's all right. And if, if you're okay with, you know, the park using some of it that way, that's fine. Unfortunately, in this municipality, the actual volume at the source is, is not a big issue for you, so. But we just noticed in, in looking at the numbers that somebody should have a lot closer dive into unaccounted-for or non-revenue water.
I think I had written down here, private hydrants. I was not aware that we had private hydrants. That was kind of interesting thing as well. Did you, didn't delve into that, or do we, was it indicated that we have a lot of private hydrants, or do we?
Yeah, your worship, what that looks like is that, like, a developer may have a private hydrant, because, you know, when they, when they go to get their insurance, maybe that can lower their insurance rates or whatever. So, so that's part of the, that's part of the understanding when they do their development. But if, but there's maintenance that goes along with, with hydrants, you know? There's winter maintenance every year, and then there's, you know, they have to be flushed, and, and it's no point in having a, you know, a red device there that if the fire department shows up, but it doesn't work. In fact, that's even worse. So, look, I've seen it happen before we did it in Fredericton, that the fire department was not happy with the quality of maintenance on the, and, and we understood that, because if you're a company that has hydrants, then, you know, that's not your core business. But it is our core business as municipality. So we said, look, we'll look after them so much a year, you pay us, and then we'll do the maintenance that you probably should've been doing, but you maybe weren't doing. So, so that's all it is, is that there are some private hydrants out there. And, and yes, we were told that there are private hydrants in this municipality.
And third thing for, that's a road to take over. Just wanna let counsel, whether we did have a, an innovation and technology committee set up last year that did look at some of these things, especially with the, the salt and spreading, and also fleet management. And, and the other thing was, was the metering that we're looking at. We did a pilot project to actually, I don't know how many, what was the number, Jeff, of ones that we did? We put meters out there that we could actually just drive by and, and get the, and then, and we are looking at maybe doing automatic billing, too, at the same time. It just goes from there to here to, out to the consumer. So we have, we have started to look at those things, but, you know, everything is attached to a number, and, and we have to be, you know, cognizant of that as well. But I, I enjoyed the presentation. It was good. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Otis?
Okay, I have...
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I thought the presentation was excellent, actually, I learned so much, and two questions. For the manager of technical services, is that something that we should consider hiring from within with somebody who knows the current equipment and can be further trained? If it's a hard position to recruit for, because I know there's staffing issues province-wide, especially in these departments? And then my second question to add on that would be, for succession planning, how have you seen other municipalities engage in hiring younger people for these positions? Because it just seems like we don't have a huge pool of young people working in these types of positions, especially with older equipment that we're using? So, would that be like more partnerships with New Brunswick Community College, or are there incentives that municipalities use to actually attract younger workers here to come do, like, mentorship? Because I just think it's great if some of our current staff who have been here a really long time could mentor some people coming on, I just don't know what that looks like for other municipalities.
Thank you. Through your worship, on the first piece, there's a detailed job description as to the tasks and competency level and talent the technical manager, technical services manager would have. If you have that talent in-house, by all means, if you don't, then you're going to have to look outside the municipality. We didn't do a talent review to be able to answer that question, but the detailed job description hopefully will help you identify that. On the incentives for junior folks taking on new roles, and again, that's why we mentioned that a deeper dive needs to be taken there, because there could be a lack of talent in the region. There could be that the young talent you have already is not willing to take the challenges, but maybe scared a little bit, maybe encouraged, so a combination of mentorship, diving to the root cause of why that is, then it can be addressed through recruiting from neighboring, there's some industrial folks here, so you could find a talent that works around you in a close-by municipality, maybe, or have a program through community college, all of the above, basically, are options. How do other municipalities deal with it? Succession planning, they encourage young folks to take on the training, to take on, they have a formal training program in place, they have the budget for it, and they kind of have somebody at a management position taking the time to work on that as well. So, there's a lot we're throwing in that technical position, but...
Yeah, maybe, your worship, I'd just add to what Geehead said, maybe I can answer both questions with one answer, but I think it's all about thinking strategically, so, like, there's an opportunity to say, you know, what do we want now, and what do we want in the future? And maybe what you do is you take that technical service manager, and I may be prepared to gamble on somebody that's younger, but with all the technical skills, you've got a lot of that hands-on knowledge in the operators that you have, you have a very experienced manager that can look after sort of the HR issues and that kind of thing, but maybe you'd say, geez, that guy works at, that guy, that girl, that person works as a, you know, a manager of technical services, learns from the consultants, learns from being around, that person might then be a good person to become the overall manager of the department. That's, to me, that's what a succession plan looks like, is you look strategically and you say, "We can fill in some of those gaps there now, maybe at a lower level, and then have people that are able to compete for those jobs when they come up." You know, because your current overall manager for that department is not going to be around forever, and so you've got to start thinking about that stuff. Did I shock you, your worship?
I just tried to get a read on that. You've got two years left, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so, Counsel Cornish?
Good job. I just got some things going through my mind when you talk about storage, equipment, manpower, experience, iron rings, whatever. Next step, now you basically have talked about Ward Two. We are about to inherit Ward One and Ward Three, which is basically the rest of the story. You talk about storage facilities, you talk about equipment, you talk about manpower, supervision. Would your next step be once this, we don't know when this is going to dump on us, it could be next year, it could be next week, I think it's before 25, which is not that far out, and we're not sure yet, but we're going to be inheriting a lot of territory. Not much water and sewage, most of it out there is wells and septic systems, but we're going to inherit a lot of roads. And I'm assuming we're going to inherit equipment, or we may have to buy equipment, or storage areas, or take over buildings that belong to them. Any thoughts? I just, it just hit me that we're very focused on what is today, but tomorrow, I'm wondering, I don't know how to phrase this, but are you prepared to go to the next phase? Because when the government comes in to dump us on this, and some of us were part of the last dump for over a year, we worked with the government, this next one could be an instant dump, or it could be another dump that tells us absolutely nothing, but here's your land, deal with it. So, my question is, what's your thoughts for the future of the rest of this? We're talking about storage, maybe we're going to inherit the DOT site, or, I don't know if I write words now, or what we have, so I'm just a little bit thinking into the future of the next step, which may not be that far away.
Through your worship, I would say the next step is asset management. Knowing what you have, sustaining what you have, and building what you can sustain. We have a few slides coming up right after this question and comment section about asset management, and I hope that would help you understand where you stand today to be able to plan for the future. So, it's very generic, I know, but there's not one thing we can tell you what's next.
But I think that's the answer, though, because, your worship, the, you, for the, so the old town of St. Stephen, you have an asset management plan, and so now, one of the first orders of business for the new municipality is to expand that asset management plan for, that you have now, to, you know, what are the new services, what are the new expectations, and what are the existing, what is the existing infrastructure there?
Level of service discussions, because you have a utility here, there's well and septic, you have certain services in the municipal district, in the previous town that are not in the municipal district, so there's a lot of discussions around that that will have financial implications on capital and operational, so that's the next step is...
I'm sure you're going to be the boss.
Oh. Glad you're hopeful.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Counsel Cornish. Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. Just comment from my desk when it comes to this stuff, one, those members of council that are, that were on the last town council, a lot of the things that are mentioned in this report sound familiar, as Counsel Heislip pointed out, we have a work order system, we own one. Our big challenge right now, and it's kind of in this report as well, is we don't have the administrative capacity to get it rolling. We've been trained, we know how it works, but we need people that are, that that's part of their everyday job, is to upload the information into that system, to get the work orders out to the guys that need to do the work. That's where our bottleneck is right now, in many, many regards, my office, Sean's office being the two key ones, and our front desk here at the town hall. And as far as the, what's going to happen over the next while with the rural roads, I've said since day one, I've told all of you, I think it'd be foolish for us to assume that the government of New Brunswick is going to continue doing this gift of rural road maintenance for forever, and we do need to plan for it, and we do need to contemplate that coming, we don't know when, but what we can do now is, we need to build the strongest foundation of what we have right now, because when that gets dumped on us, we'll either be ready for it, or it'll break us, and that's what's going to happen, and that's where some of the things, and, you know, the manager of technical services, or some of the other things in the report, and I've mentioned a couple of councils individually before this meeting, it may not be tomorrow, but it's something that we have to look at as far as strengthening our core of what we're doing right now, so that when those extra things come in to go on top of that, go those core services, we can survive that bump, because if we can't, we're going to be in a bigger mess than we need to be, and we know, we run a small crew, we run, the guys work hard, and they do a lot, and they do a lot really fast for a lot of us, and, but if we keep piling on that, that little extra, that little extra, little extra, the system will break, and however many square kilometers of rural roads and whatnot is going to be, that's a big straw going on that camel's back at some point, so we need to strengthen that back as much as possible before that happens.
I believe we're actually witnessing that system reason stressed now, I mean, just from what we have already done, as our administrative staff is stressed. I'm going to take this opportunity to talk a little bit myself. One thing that really surprised me when I read the report was how low our employees are in our public work staff, like, I was surprised when you hear there's six guys that are doing, and they do a lot of things, they're, like, right from fixing a flag to stuffing here, I mean, but you're right, they're, I like your model, their can-do attitude, they definitely are, and they do the job and do it and make it work, and they always seem to make it work. But when we evaluate their shop, I'm sure that they want that shop better, but, and I don't want to speak for them, but I'm sure that that's on their list, but they just never get to it, because a bigger issue always happens, and I don't think that's fair to them, and, you know, and like you said, that shop causes delays in what they're doing, because it's not easy accessible, not easy work atmosphere, so I think to fix it, though, we've got to organize the staff to be able to suit the needs and the requirements of their job, and be prepared for changes, like retiring or moving on, so then you can absorb that shock as well. So, I really appreciate to hear that, but it was, I mean, I knew, I know all the guys, but I was just really surprised to see the numbers, you know, the six, and the two, and the two, and I'm like, what? How do they do all that? It just surprises me, but they do well, so, I just wanted to bring that up, and, I guess we kind of already touched on the amalgamation and the assets, which we don't know what's coming, so, you know, I think that's something we've got to kind of keep an eye on, and make sure that they're looking after their assets before they hand them over to us, I've been kind of concerned about that, if and when it happens, and, but we still got to, like Jeff was saying, we still got to set a plan, move forward, and like I just saying about staff, we also got to be ready for that shock, and, and we can increase efficiencies without staff, too, so there's, that's always been on my mind, too. Yeah, so I just got to, I mean, Sean, you might be able to answer this question, we're talking about the pump sizes doubling in size, are they, just being the guy that signs those power bills every month, I'm just wondering, are we going to see a bigger power bill rate, or can they be idled down?
They will be more efficient, but the, we do require more capacity, absolutely, yeah, yeah. I do have a comment, if you don't mind. In the event that the young people are out there listening, there were some comments that I might not necessarily agree with, not that your report's wrong, but the information that you were given, we have hired some younger people, we hired a gentleman that's, I'm going to say 35 or under, and within weeks of bringing him in, I asked him if he'd be interested in taking water treatment training, and he said absolutely, and we have him in the program, he does it, he does it online through NBCC, he's doing it during the day when we can find time for him, and he embraced it, and he jumped at it. We hired two new employees into our labor pool, both are under 30, one will start on Monday, again, he, we asked him, would you be interested in taking any training we give him, they, he completely embraced it, and we hired another that will start two weeks from Monday, who has tickets and trades and has demonstrated that he will do the same, so I know kind of where those, where that information came from, and I take that with a grain of salt, but I didn't want those young people that might be listening to think that they weren't being recognized for what they're actually doing, and we are looking to the future, and we have a, we have a very good crew, but the truth is, is they're all my age, and they are going to time out pretty much all at the same time, so we have to plan for the future, and we are planning for the future.
Thank you for clarifying that. Counsel Heislip?
I think it's more of a comment rather than, and it's probably just amongst council, because I did like the idea of the, just the 100% salt, but I think we should, might do a pilot project of that, like, maybe half the town or something, just to see how it works out, or, maybe you've been thinking about this, because, obviously, by the eyebrows there that Ray used to have, because I don't like to see it, I can't see reduction of sand, because you still have to clean the street, you still have to clean the street, am I, right, I mean, I don't like crack filling, and I watched a video on, should I get the light stuff or the heavy sand stuff, and the guy said in the video, "You still got to clean your lampshade anyway," right, so, doesn't matter which one you use, so buy the cheaper one, right? And it is true, I mean, so that's, you know, so you still got to clean, you still got to clean, you still got to vacuum, you still got to vacuum, so, so we just, you know, we just see how that would go, and see if it's a reduction in price, if we have to use more salt than maybe it's not, or what our expectations of people in the community are, do they want it bare cement, or they want it just so they don't slip around, or, you know, because we've had this issue before, oh, especially in those courts back there, where they, all the sand piles up, and it's like a dust storm going through there in the spring, so, I mean, I think that's, might be, that might be a good where to start, actually, to see if we have a reduction in that sand around those courts, right?
Oh, sorry, I just hit the button, but go ahead.
No, sorry, I was just going to respond, so, so I've done this, I did it at Fredericton, and I'll just toss these numbers to you, so, when I arrived on the scene, I remember the numbers clearly, we used 5,000 tons of salt per year, 20,000 tons of sand, 5,000 tons of salt, 20,000 tons of sand. When we converted over, and I'm talking about salt primarily on the main roads, like the arterials and collectives, when all is said and done, what did we do? Still had 5,000 tons of salt, but we were down to around 2,000 tons of sand, and so, in terms of spring cleaning, spring cleaning used to take, like, night shift, more than a month, well, that went to almost nothing, so there was a big reduction there, there was a big reduction in cleaning catch basins, because sand's got to go somewhere, so, so that's what it was, it was a change in the volume, and when you say, well, how is that possible to just use the same, so, you're all familiar with Fredericton, so let's say you're doing the run to the airport, but your aim is to bear that up, the salt is bearing it up, the sand isn't doing anything, so, all you're doing is, instead of running one load of material out there, you're running three loads of material out there, and then you've got to clean that three, our supervisor used to have this expression, people would complain about spring cleaning, and he'd say, "Now we've got to clean up all the sand that we never put down in the wintertime." People would complain in the wintertime if there was no sand, and then they'd complain in the spring if you didn't clean it. So, anyway, that's sort of the theory behind it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, actually, because when you said 5,000 tons, then I'm thinking, okay, you didn't add more salt to your formula after, but I think, how is he doing that? But, no, thank you. And, we don't have the dirt on the people's homes and porches and stuff, too, right? So, there's all the other wins, too, but...
Your worship, just so you don't think it's a panacea here, but like, the downside of it would be is that you've got to take care of your equipment, because you're running straight salt on it, and so, you know, that introduces the whole maintenance thing in terms of faster corrosion of your equipment.
Good point taken. Counsel Harding?
Thank you. When you're talking salt, are you talking liquid salt, like brine, or are you talking regular salt?
Your worship, you're talking regular salt, but now there's like new techniques, techniques pre-wetting the salt with the liquid, so that, and you can even pre-wet your salt-sand mix. and, and you can even pre-wet your salt-sand mix so that it starts working more quickly for the salt road.
Thank you.
Yep.
Leave it alone.
No, thank you. And then you, when you're talking about those cul-de-sacs, I just, like, that'll, that'll get controlled in that flow issue too, right? Cause they're, they're going slower in there, so all of a sudden they're just dumping a lot more sand while they're in there. And I'm doing on the way in and the way out. So that control issue will help. Okay. Uh, any more questions? Okay. Thank you very much. So you can go on your next?
Yeah. We have a formal slide.
Some asset management. Uh, just quickly on, uh, wrap it up. The planning, the, the, the snow control plan would, would encapsulate the level of service which is dictated by, by council. So we want bare streets two hours after the storm, arterials, compacted snow with, with sand and branches, et cetera. So it all starts at council level, then operational plans follow through. And this is where the recommendation comes from, to have formal operational plans for folks. So, moving into, uh, asset management fundamentals and the role of council. The fundamentals of any asset management plan, the first thing is you would have an inventory of all of your assets, everything you own with data about those assets like the acquisition date, the cost, uh, the expected useful life, whether it's impacted with, uh, climate change or not, so on and so forth. So the size, the material, everything about that, that asset. The second thing you would do is the condition rating. And you could do that, a non-destructive assessment, or you could use some, uh, technology to assess the, the condition of your assets. You'll see here a two-foot loaded, uh, uh, pipe for water. The third thing you would see on your asset management plan is, uh, is a risk matrix, which is, uh, a result of multiplying the impact of failure by the likelihood of, of failure. And the older the asset is, the likelihood of failure becomes higher, the more important it is, uh, to the community or to the level of service, then the higher of an impact becomes. So when it comes that you have many failing assets at the same time, you look back at this matrix and decide, okay, which one am I gonna do first? The last and but not least thing you would see on, in an asset management plan is, is long-term financial planning and have a long-term plan and lifecycle cost analysis to replace those assets. Sometimes there's a trap with new assets as well. You, you, you come up with the capital money to, to build something or renew something and that's great, but there's an operational, uh, price tag associated with that asset sometimes overseen where it's more power, more people, what have you. So full lifecycle analysis is important and capitalization so you know when to replace key components and build reserves. If a life lives for eighty years and below your street, you're not gonna, you're gonna need zero, zero dollars to capitalize, but all of a sudden you're gonna be hit with a big bill. So this is the importance of, uh, lifecycle cost analysis. The other key factor and it's a role of council is, uh, in asset management is the level of service. A picture says a thousand words. What you see here is a trail. The first one is regular path. The second one is wider, some gravel, some signage. The third one is paved, wide, enables, uh, wheelchair access, so on. The fourth one has railing, urban, concrete, lit, so on. They're all trails, but obviously the cost of building and operating the first one is totally different than the last one. And this is the importance of the level of service. You can apply that to any municipal service you offer, whether it's fire response time, whether it's, uh, bare street, whether it's garbage pickup, what have you. So, uh, why is asset management important? Like I said before, it's, enables you to sustain what you have and build what you can sustain. That's my, uh, you know, uh, foreword briefing of what asset management is all about. Know what you're getting into. Uh, when somebody's donating something to the municipality, is it an asset or is it a liability? Right? Is it, is it really free? Uh, is it built to the standards that, uh, that you accept? If, if it's roads, for example, or if it's a building, uh, you know? Asset management is great for folks in your seats for informed decision-making because you get the data to back up your, your decisions. It's not just feelings and, and, and thoughts. It's solid facts and data that sometimes would enable you to say no to certain things and also enables you to defend your position as to why you said yes to other things. And the, specifically the risk matrix is, comes handy when there's a lot of priority, everything is coming to an end at once, end of life at once, and you need to prioritize, the, the risk matrix could help you there. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Murray to discuss the role of council in terms of asset management.
Look, I'm gonna be, uh, very quick, your worship, because Gee has already covered really most of the key stuff. You already have a policy, uh, your municipality already has a policy on the governance. Uh, Gee adds mention level of service setting priorities. Here's all I'd say is that, uh, I'll get these all out here. The, the asset management, uh, to, to the counselor's point previously, that's one of the foundational pieces that, uh, that, uh, you have for your budget. Like, uh, basically, uh, uh, what is it they say? A bridge isn't a bridge just to be a bridge. You have a bridge to provide a service to get people over the river. So council decides what kind of services that, uh, that they wanna provide and then, uh, and, and then staff tells you what kind of infrastructure, uh, uh, you need in order to provide those services. And the final thing I'll say, and so it should be like a foundational piece for your budget is, uh, that's one of the key, uh, pieces. The asset management plan and your municipality's strategic plan are the key, uh, uh, things that inform your, your budget process. And sort of the last thing I'll say is that, uh, also if you have an asset management plan, it, I've heard, uh, different times that, uh, staff will complain, geez, council, they're micromanaging us, they're meddling in our affairs. Well, uh, like a, a, a good asset management plan will lay it out very clearly that there's no doubt council's the boss. They decide, uh, what the level of service is. They decide, uh, what services that they wanna provide. But then what your staff does is say, okay, leave it with us now, council. We'll decide how many trucks we need. We'll decide whether we replace trucks after seven years or ten years or whatever. And that's the role of staff. So it is, a, a good asset management plan can delineate that role between what is the role of, uh, the elected officials and, and what is the role of the staff. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Much appreciated, guys. Thank you. So next up we get, uh, Rory Pickard.
You got the water service.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Okay. Oh, still waters. Oh, I thought we just did that with GemTac, right?
Well, they have two presentations, your worship.
Oh, so, okay. So, oh, okay. I thought they were shortening up the last version. Okay.
Are we good or?
No.
Are we gonna do that in the world? Yeah. Okay. We're gonna do that. I thought you were gonna do that. Might be.
Yeah, no, I thought you kinda sped up the last little section. Okay. Okay. I'll take that though.
I know we have a presentation.
No, that's all, all good. We're all just trying to get something done. That's all fine. Okay. So, right.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so, yeah, we're, I'm Rory Pickard with Dillon Consulting. I know I've met many of you around the, uh, the table, but not all of you yet. Um, so I'm just providing a, a bit of an update on the municipal well, um, out at Maxwell Crossing. So, uh, I think everyone knows that, uh, back in March, uh, there was a, was an issue at the well. There was a turbidity spike. Um, and, uh, going to, I'll just recap a little bit about what we found and what the, the next steps are there. So, uh, so the, the turbidity issue that happened in March, um, uh, we, we responded, uh, along with municipal staff, uh, the following day. And, uh, we, we had a submersible camera in the well and actually found that the, uh, the, the condition of the structure of the well itself was in, uh, it, it, it hadn't failed, uh, which was the big fear. Uh, so going back a bit, back in, uh, the late nineteen sixties, there was an extension added to the well. So this was a horizontal pipe that came in through the rock foundation of the well itself to, uh, improve capacity and, and, uh, flow to that well. So, um, what happened, uh, was that pipe itself outside of the well actually collapsed and allowed gravel to migrate into the well. So, uh, that's what the, uh, the video confirmed. Um, so the, the, I, uh, so over the, the la- the last few weeks, uh, we've been working on collecting additional data. We've actually found the original drawings for the well, uh, which took a little bit of digging, but we did, uh, we did secure those, um, cause they are a little bit old. Um, they're a little bit difficult to read too, but, uh, uh, we do have that. And, uh, we've been in touch with, uh, with Public Works and, uh, gathering, uh, historical data as well on, uh, pumping data, well-level data and so on. Uh, so all this is, uh, to feed into the immediate next step. So, uh, one of the first things we need to do, uh, is get a, an improved understanding of what the well condition is. So we have visible evidence from the video, uh, work that we did back in, in March. Uh, but, uh, we need to, we're, we're going to propose to build a 3D model of the well just to understand if there are, uh, deflections or regularities in the well itself that just aren't observed with the, with the camera. Uh, so really get a better condition assessment of the well. Um, the, the next, uh, the next thing we'll be looking at is assessing the impact of losing that, uh, extension piece that was added in the late nineteen sixties. Uh, so, um, that'll involve, um, you know, partially looking back at data, uh, pre and post collapse, um, and, uh, gathering data as well. Uh, so precipitation data and hydrometric, uh, station data that, uh, exists along Dennis Stream to, uh, basically understand the vulnerability, uh, of that well, um, in terms of, uh, how it will react in, uh, low precipitation or drought conditions. Um, and, uh, and if there's any remedial measures needed there. So, um, and, and the next part of that as well is evaluating, so this is a gravel deposit, uh, along the, the Dennis Stream out of Maxwell Crossing. And, uh, uh, the next step is improving our understanding of what that gravel deposit consists of. How deep is it? What are the extents of it? And all of that will feed together, um, to, uh, help us understand and inform what next steps can look like in terms of, uh, how can we better use, uh, that, that gravel deposit? Are there, are there, um, uh, better ways we can extract water? Or do we focus on reinforcing the existing well itself and, and structural upgrades to that? Uh, so that's, that's all the, uh, the, the next steps we're looking at, at the moment. Um, and, and really, um, what that all feeds into is developing a long-term strategy for the, the water source. Maxwell Crossing has been the primary water supply for, uh, the town of St. Stephen and now the municipal district, uh, since, uh, the early nineteen hundreds. Um, and, uh, and it's, it's done quite well. Um, it's, 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 there's, there's, the infrastructure had a lot, has lasted quite well. So, um, but we know it doesn't last forever. And, uh, and, and so, uh, the, this, these next steps are really going to help inform, um, what, what a long-term plan looks like there. It's, it will be phased. That's gonna consist of, um, you know, capital upgrades, uh, you know, what are the, what are the expectations for treatment, uh, and, uh, and, and pumping? So, um, uh, so, and, and as well, um, this is a question some folks may have as well that, um, you know, has, has there been a search for other water sources throughout the town of St. Stephen over the years? And there has. Um, that, uh, that goes back decades and, uh, there, there has not been a lot of promising, um, results from that for anyone who's, who's been around for those, um, that, that exploration over the years. So, um, so the water source at Maxwell Crossing is a precious resource. It's a very important one. And, uh, and, and that's why it's getting some, some pretty focused attention here now. So. Question?
Thank you, Rory. Uh, any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, council?
Just for clarification, cause I used to swim out there, but I don't know the, the layout of the well. Is the well actually a well that's fed by accupiers? Is it a well that's actually filled through the gravel that's there now that actually flows into this hole?
So it, uh, uh, I would say it comes from underneath. So the, the, the physical structure itself, it's about thirty feet in diameter, about nine, nine meters, thirty feet in diameter and about the same depth. It's about thirty feet deep. Um, the, the, the base was constructed, it's, I think it's approximately six feet high. It's a, it's a rock foundation. Uh, above that, it's, uh, it's brick. Um, and I know that was one of the fears when there was a depression outside of it back in March is a video was going to find brick slant in the bottom and it, and it didn't. And I think a lot of people here breathe a bit of a sigh of relief that, um, we, we had some time to really think about this and, and how do we approach this and, and do it right? Um, so the, so one of the things we don't know is how deep is that gravel deposit? What are the extents of it? Um, we know that it's, it's, it's only thirty feet deep as far as how, how deep that well was constructed. Um, I, I think the initial assumption is bedrock is probably not far beyond that and that's why it was built to that depth. Um, but that's, that's something we really do want to understand more about.
Question is the pipe that was put in, in back in the sixties or wherever it was? Um, diameter and was the purpose of that going directly to the stream head itself, out to the stream on the surface and give you?
So, um, I, I, the, so it was around nineteen sixty-nine, we, we found the drawings for that. Um, so it's a, it's a four hundred and fifty millimeter diameter, so eighteen inch diameter, uh, perforated metal pipe, uh, came through the foundation wall. It appears about one meter off the floor of the well and it extended about sixty meters, um, uh, I don't know which direction, but six, sixty meters, uh, be- beyond the well. Um, it, it, it's at about the same depth, uh, so approximately thirty feet. It's pretty deep. Uh, it doesn't go out into the, the stream bed or anything like that. It follows parallel, so it's still about the same distance away from Dennis Stream or the edge of the stream. Um, but the intention of that was to provide additional capacity, uh, to the well itself. So it, it improved capacity of that, uh, of, of that, uh, uh, structure. Now, there, there's been a lot of things change, uh, since that time. Um, you know, at one time, uh, your neighbors crossed the river, so, uh, the, the town actually fed Callis Main. Um, they were on the system, so there, all the demand from, uh, Callis Main, uh, was fed by, uh, uh, Maxwell Crossing as well. So that's, that's no longer the, the case. Um, and, uh, there's, there's been quite a bit of work, um, uh, done, uh, I recall back in the, in the nineties. Um, it was before my time, but I've, I've seen the reports and, uh, there was a lot of work done on the, the wa- water auditing and tightening things up. And you heard about that a little bit, um, prior to me stepping up here. So, uh, so, so things have tightened up and part of these next steps are understanding what are the current needs, um, demands, uh, of, of the, uh, the water system and how does that relate to, uh, the capacity that it is able to provide? So, um, so it was put in there to increase capacity, but things have changed. Do we even need that capacity? But, uh, that additional capacity now?
Uh, that water supply is, is that the Dennis Stream, that actually flows out of Moores Mills Lake? Is that correct?
I think, I believe so, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Going further upstream, so, yeah. Yeah.
So that is our? Our basis for the water supply to Dennis Stream, which is the basis for the town.
Yes. It's a pretty big watershed.
Grounds, I drew around the lake and everybody said, why are you doing that? And I said, the stream comes out of that lake, I think, but I've been out here for fifty years, so I'm assuming it's kinda due to that. What's the, uh, prognosis, uh, with the environmental changes that's going on of, uh, Moores Mills Lake? Uh, I don't think it's a very deep lake, if I remember right. Uh, being able to keep up with, obviously that is the core. If that happens to drop so low or disintegrates or whatever the words are, what, we won't have a water supply. We don't have a backup, I should say. Is that correct?
There, there isn't a backup right now. There is one water supply. There isn't, uh, you know, the, the ideal future state is, uh, there is a hundred percent redundancy. If something happened or you had to do major maintenance on your water source, you'd have a second, you'd have redundant infrastructure.
Water tower. Is that used or was it used or does that supply Milltown or what's the story on that one?
So, that is still used. It is all connected to the same system, so it's all fed from the same water supply. The, I think, so that dates back to the late 1980s, and I believe that was put in to increase fire storage capacity with the industry on that end of town.
Anywhere near that actually comes from Morse Mills to that tank. Okay. I was the impression they had something around there feeding in. Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Heisler.
Yes, Rory. Yeah, I mean, Morse Mills Lake is part of the aquifer, it's not the aquifer, right? It's not the actual source, or is that, is that accurate?
It is, I mean, it is part of the overall watershed. Yes.
Watershed, it's not the whole watershed. What I was going to ask is, yeah, you're looking at, like, I can see the before and after because that's going to, you know, that's going to tell you, okay, when this collapsed, what's the capacity even before? Was it any different, right? I mean, obviously, it's going to be a little bit different, I would think, but doesn't meet our demands today. But after the other, you know, the other colleagues, or I guess calling colleagues because it's probably all engineers, right? Right? There's also mention about future uses, right? And that's an important thing to consider too. I mean, it might be, it might do well right now. And with the reduction in water use from flakeboard and reduction, because we're not supplying Callas, but there could be other stuff coming down the way that in the next 15, 20 years, or 10 years, or five years, that might require a demand on that water use, right? So, that'd have to be taken into consideration as well when you're looking at that, I would think. And I'm sure you've thought of that.
Yeah, sure, right. And, you know, right now, immediately, the focus is what needs to be done right now? Are there any capacity concerns in the immediate future where, you know, other infrastructure would need to be put in place in short order to make up for that? But long-term, before spending big capital at that site, understanding not just the current, but the future needs, and certainly accounting for what the planned growth is, both, you know, residential, industrial, and so on.
Thank you. I'll just give you an example of what some of the growth that could happen is with the potash, right? So, when that was coming, remember, we were discussing, can we handle the extra water load? So, those are the things we've got to be prepared to if industry grows, right? Okay. Sean?
Right now, that Morse Mills and Maxwell Crossing is the primary and the only watershed that we have. But we have discussed, and it's been discussed in the past, that there is another watershed that runs right through this town that could potentially be utilized in the future for redundancy or capacity. It just requires the infrastructure to be put in place in order to utilize that. So, we're not utilizing it now, but it is there.
Yes, Counselor Cornish.
Sean, when you said that, two things flashed into my mind. One, putting the pipe up in the St. Corey River and have to purify it somehow from the Woodland Mill. And the other one, when I worked in the British West Indies, we had desalination plants, which didn't work very well. And I don't know, it's like we got six hours or eight hours of water coming in and out in tanks and all that. Is desalination an option these days, or is that something in the past? Maybe, maybe I'm going too deep here, but I'm just saying, if we had a total failure, something's got to give since I know when I left here years ago, probably before I left, after I left here, there was holes all over this country. Cleaned upper mills, I can still see water tanks down in there. I don't think they ever found a heck of a lot, but I don't know what happened to them or like, it's kind of shocking what you told me tonight. It's like in St. John, we get the three lakes. Someone dumps a chemical into that, you're toast. So, here, the same type of thing is that, maybe it's a good thing that we did have that, or at least were aware of it, but it's kind of interesting if something major did happen, we have no water. Am I right?
That is the primary. Now, I will say, in the same vicinity in the mid 90s, there were two drilled wells that were added, but it's not in that, it's on the other side of Maxwell Crossing on the road. So, there is, again, there's some additional capacity added by those two drilled wells. I mean, they're all served from the same source essentially, but there is some additional capacity there. It is still fairly limited, but, you know, to the point on like, so desalination, it's an option, but it is an expensive option, both capital and operating energy. It's, it is an expensive one. And as far as surface water supply, I get, so the other part of it is, you know, looking at the capital cost of, you know, how you might do this 30 years ago under that regulatory climate and treatment requirements at that time. Different things may be feasible now with increased treatment requirements anyway, so.
We don't, not around here anyway, yeah. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Rory.
Much appreciated. Now, next up, we got strategic initiative update, which we, no, there isn't. Is there, what do you got there, Jeff?
We don't have any.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. All right. So, guess what? I need a motion to move into closed.
I settle.
Counsel Harding, Counsel Heisler. And, yeah, we could take a little recess? Yeah. I'll give you six.
[laughter]